Hi, everybody. I would like to call tonight's meeting to order, starting with a roll call vote. Joe?
Here.
Jen?
Here.
Nicole?
Here.
And I'm here as well. We have a forum. Nicole, has this meeting been properly noticed?
It has.
Yeah, let's start the meeting by reading our.
I would like a nice meeting to order, starting with Nicole.
Really?
That's.
I see my biggest fear. Thank you for.
That's not what we wanted to have happen. Okay. Please hold.
No problem.
I think I have to. Oh, boy.
Music?
Mm-hmm. We'll have to see. I have to join the meeting again. There's no call. Okay.
So let's just go meeting and do the live stuff separately, but if we have enough to go, we'll just go without recording.
Oh, I think it is live streaming.
Nicole, can yours?
I sure can.
Okay. Can I go ahead and do our equity statement? Are we? I would like to read our equity statements for our meeting. Each student has access to the resources and educational rigor they need at the right moment in their education, regardless of race, gender, ethnicity, ability, language, family background, or family income. Our results policy is each student will acquire the knowledge and skills necessary to achieve their personal goals, thrive in a global society, and lead a healthy, self-fulfilling life. And if we can take a look at our agenda, are there any questions?
Yes. Can I have the board's permission to give us a potential report to flop item A and item B in order of presentation?
That should be fine. Okay, we have a motion to approve the agenda with the noted. The noted adjustment. So motion from Jen, is there a second?
Second.
I have a second from Joe. All in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
The meeting agenda has been adopted with the noted change. And with that, we can move straight into the superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you and thank you Board of Education for allowing this with adjustment to our agenda. With that, we will ask Chad Weasley and Pete Brenner to join us on the the board tables for the budget update. At the conclusion of that, I will respectfully close the superintendent's report and have it take movement to board action and then we'll like to read the superintendent's report.
Good evening, board. Good to see everybody. We made it to October 24th. Oh, midwinter. I didn't know if we'd actually ever get here. So it is wonderful to see everybody. We have what is the most important agenda item for the year when it comes to the work related to our annual budget. Certainly, the primary budget is most of the heavy lifting that goes into getting what we have to discuss tonight in order. But we've got all the final pieces in place where we're comfortable giving the board a brief, more brief update because we've been at this now for well over six months in terms of where the final numbers came in and what we're recommending to the Board of Education as far as a final levy for both the passing and non-passing budgets. So certainly Pete's around. We run into technical questions related to the information we're going to share tonight. We did want to give an update on state aid. We have some more exact numbers in terms of what happened with our tax base growth, and that should be of interest to the board in terms of tax impact relative to the mill rate that we'll discuss tonight. We have kind of the standard boilerplate detailed budget regarding Fund 10 and 27, which are our two primary funds that end up really to the levy we recommend we pass tonight. We'll give a budget summary by fund. We'll do a little bit of mill rate, and then we're going to make our final recommendations, which will include on the board vote. Certainly, I've got a spot for questions at the end of our presentation, but don't hesitate to have it. So we've seen this a number of times, but I think this tells the story in terms of all of the work we've done. I think there's probably some type of grown area school district record when it comes to the amount of time that we've spent together trying to put this budget together. I wanted to thank the board in terms of the the year, our very hard work that went into getting us to to balance budgets and eventually tonight's vote on the levy. And that more than anything is just a reminder of all the work that we've done all the way back to this last winter that ended up with lots of compromise, lots of adjustments, lots of deep thinking around things relative to one-time funding and mill rate, and got us to a spot that we can pass to balance budgets this evening. Do you want to spend a little bit of time on me? And certainly could be here to answer questions if those folks had them. As a reminder to the Board of the community, really the two main places that we can fund our school district on an annual basis, and that's operating revenue, paying staff and staff for their salaries and benefits, and also general operating expenses, buses, lights, heat, you name it. Come from two sources, state aid and local property taxpayers. And on an annual basis, that aid is equalized around the state. And there are a couple of main factors that go into the state setting setting aid demands on an annual basis. The first big factor is how much is in the pot. How much the state is allocating towards their portion of running our school district that local poverty taxpayers don't have to pay. That's one big thing, and those two things come out of buying in budgets. And the other big thing on an annual basis is attempting to equalize how that pot is distributed. And some big factors on that come around the number of students we have in terms of enrollment, and also how much our property is worth per student. And we ended up, a long story short, this year ended up getting $25,400,000 in state aid that offsets essentially what property taxpayers have to pay to run our school district. That was slightly more than we had presented in previous budgets. But that comes with a caveat. So when it comes to this year's recommended recommendation in terms of how we use aid, we are actually recommending that we have an eye on next year. So the fact that our property value went up 18.8%. And this is part of the reason we have Pete sitting in the seat is Pete is really good at taking a guess at what we're going to get in aid for next year. If all things hold consistent in terms of the percentage of that pot, and we are expecting a pretty big aid hit for next year. And we've talked about the board. The board has told me and our team that it's important for us not to yo-yo and chase mill rate. That it's important to our property taxpayers that our portion of what we get from property taxes isn't going up and down five or 10 or 15 percentage points on an annual basis. And if we made the decision this year to lower our mill rate because we had a slight increase in aid, knowing that next year we're likely not going to see an increase frequency in decent decrease, we would be chasing a mill rate. And the board keeping that mill rate steady previously has allowed us to prepay debt and make strategic moves along the way when we're having a good year, let's pay off a little more debt. When we're having a bad year in terms of aid, that's our opportunity to not have the property taxes go up, you know, with the yo-yo, and we can keep the mill rate flat. So we're actually recommending a mill rate you'll see here eventually of 1140 that we have built into that five-year budget assumption sheet in terms of what happens with a passing and non-passing referendum. So I hope that made sense. Good news in the short term that she gives us about a million extra dollars to prepay debt this year with the mill rate we're recommending. Heard from our local taxpayers at those information sessions that that is still an important item relative to us balancing the annual budget. And it also gives us a mill rate that we have an eye on for next year if we can get hit in. So that I wanted to make sure the board understood what was baked into our recommendations relative to state aid this year.
Yeah, no, there's a slide, but here I am. Can you give some context of why the lower state aid is being predicted for next year? Because I mean, I see the bullet point, right, due to increased property values, but just like for some greater context of why you're anticipating that?
I'm going to do my best to summarize it. We'll see if Pete. But the single biggest factor that Pete uses in his calculation for what he thinks aid will do has to do with our increase in property value relative to how many students we have in comparison to the rest of the state. So state aid is actually equalized aid, which means if other communities have essentially the same number of students and their property value went up 10%, the aid pot shifts because our local property taxpayers, in the eyes of the state, can hold a little bit more of the taxing burden because our property is worth so much more. We almost went up a million dollars, a billion dollars property value in a year, which means that our ability to shoulder the load that the state passes back on to us is greater than a school district that might have property value go up 5% or 7%. That is exactly, that is exactly correct. The only thing that I would add to here is statewide, the average is about 14% difference. And since we are a solid four percentage points above that, that's why we'll also see that. And we have a slide for that later. The the two factors that put us above the state average would be that TID closure, and that was about 3% of our total growth. And the other factor is new construction. So some communities certainly saw new construction, but we have opportunities in our school district to build new houses and start new businesses that other that other school districts potentially don't. So our our tax base grew by 6% because of those two factors alone. And really only 112% by our calculation, just in terms of properties being reassessed from all that. Good question. All right, this is the best I could do to try to get our six months of work onto one single slide with high-level board points of what exists in both of the budgets we've been working on for six months. So as a reminder, our passing budget and non-passing budgets have the same levy. But there are differences in terms of what we have built in for expenditures. So the passing budget, as a reminder, includes the cost of increasing raise for our staff. Last month, the board agreed to build in a $2 hourly staffing hourly increase for our hourly staff only with a passing referendum. And we used some opportunity. We had the one-time funding available that we did not want to use to pay for salary and benefits if we didn't have to. And we leveraged that in three ways. Results policy implementation, Dr. Hawkins' budget, some of all the she talked to a two weeks ago on some ideas she's got relative directly aligned to results policies. Two, we're actually going to use some of that TID money to offset a levy for Fund 41. We're recommending a $2 million one-time dump into Fund 41, and that means us have our hands tied. The board can't touch it. I can't touch it. We can't touch it without putting money into our facilities. So that that money has to be used for lengthening the useful life of the facilities we own. And it is levied to do only that. And we have we have some assets that we, the board knows, we need to have long-term planning and our maintain and not attempt to try to do that on a one-off basis. Getting some money in Fund 41 allows us to do that, and it also allows us to offset some more levies for additional prepayment on debt. We have a long-range plan for capital expansion relative to budget moves. And we we know, as I presented to the board earlier, we will probably have in conversations in three to five years about square footage, five to seven years from now. And this passing budget allows us to do that in a way that we wouldn't have to ask the community for a dollar or a dollar fifty mill rate increase to add new square footage. Part of the reason we ended up at $19, $30. We've got funding flexibility going into the next two-year budget cycle, and we know that no one in this room has an idea what that's going to look like. A lot of it could be decided on November 8. We've got mill rate stability moving forward, and we've got added people built into our budget assumptions so we can continue our programming and classroom size. The non-passing budget is a little simpler. 0% increase per staff. Use of one-time funds go towards credit for your service for our staff and stabilizing operations for this upcoming year, but we would have a budget cliff that we would be working on for the following year. Not as bad as it could have been because we made some concessions when we started with a $5 million gap, the main one being 0% CPI increase. We've got no add to staff related to student enrollment growth built into our budget assumptions and post-reparendum. And we have some challenges in 2023, 2024, like many other school districts in the state. I'm going to try to get through these rather quickly. I did think the board might be interested in this in terms of where nearly a billion dollars of property growth came from in a year. This should also be of interest because, much like the year the epic TID closed, we have opportunities to add into our levy without spiking taxes because we got a 6% growth between sources, 6.32% growth, and that's that new construction, and that's that TID. We're projecting inflationary growth coming from the remaining properties that already existed at about 12% for its overall growth of 18.66%. There are some very number-intensive kind of boilerplate slides around a detailed budget report. These are the numbers that Pete initially has to file with DPI in terms of our final budget. Those won't get pumped through until after the referendum. This is the budget detail for state, local, federal, and other sources relative to revenue and expenditures. It is, the board should note that we have, at this point, Pete, correct me if I'm wrong, an unaudited, close to be finished amount for what will be a fund balance deposit from the 22 square years. So that we're getting closer on that number, and that will be $1.7 billion that will help help with our our fund balance for this upcoming year, which is a good thing. It means that we, Pete kind of may be, I think, he was right. If we if we apply essentially inflationary growth and the growth of our budget relative to what the fund balance deposit or surplus was, it's actually a little less than it was the year before. But as a reminder to the board, fund balance gives us opportunity in the future to that, to offset capital expansion. It is good for our bond rating. We eventually have to borrow money again, and it is a sign of financial stability and health for our school district. Also, we made all the rules last year. So that is, that's the final numbers that would go into the detailed budget for a non-passing budget scenario, 1027. A passing budget, the main number I wanted to point out to the board is you'll see, because we're only talking about 1027, a really big increase in terms of our total revenue. And what we're recommending kind of on the back end regarding use of our new Fund 10 revenue commission is actually to use Fund 10 and then transfer it to Fund 39 to pay off referendum debt. But you'll see that Fund 39 transfer down below where our best guess at this point would be $13.6 million, and that number could actually push a little higher when it comes to transfer time after the first of the year and we're starting to see other budget tracks. But that is, that's additional levy that we're moving towards prepayment on capital debt. This is the slide that we've all kind of been tracking over the last six months relative to mill rate history. We will see here that we we put, pushed this out over the past 10 years. Our mill rate will be sad if the levy passes tonight at 1140, which is nearly a dollar and quarter decrease from where it was in previous year. We we have prior to tonight, over the last five years, prioritized that stable mill rate. The board had taxing capacity to keep a mill rate flat, and we could have passed it at 1264. That would have meant that everyone's increased property value, our taxing portion would have gone up exactly with how much your your property went up in value, our portion of those taxes. The board elected not to do that, and we ended up in a spot that we're dropping the mill rate by a dollar and a quarter. We're still comfortable with where both levies are at. But this is definitely going to, with the new property growth and the TID closure, is going to mean that we will not see taxes going through the roof in our district because we brought that number down so much.
Right. Am I, is it correct here that this is, all of this historical, like this slide is still lower than what the referendum mill rate proposal was when the high school was built? So just that sign, I don't know why I'm feeling like putting voice to that, but just the fact that the board is always right, kind of analyzing with your help to kind of be realistic about the mill rate and not just maxing out what we've been given permission to do. That makes sense.
Correct. I think you're actually talking about the mill rate increase in 2017 when we took on $162 million capital debt. The pre-reparend of mill rate was was 13 and 35. So the board, and all of you will do this for the next budget cycle, the board ended up probably having a few other assumptions come in that we thought we could have gone all in at 1335. And even six years ago, the board said, no, we've got an opportunity here to actually keep taxes a little bit more in check and still meet the needs of both our taxpayers and what goes on in our school district. So certainly that was, yeah, 50 cents below where we were talking pre-reparend. All right. Again, these are a couple of other boilerplate slides. There are a few funky things that are going on relative to that fund having transferred. But these would be revenues by fund in both passing, non-passing, and last year's budget. Expenditure by fund line up the same in terms of passing and non-passing. And this is really the, probably the the spot we should land on as far as what's going on with our overall general fund, referendum debt service, and all other funds combined. You will see that we have both a non-passing and passing mill rate of 1140. Once we are all in and we're reflecting that increase in what's going on with our property debt. And it is, it's amazing what's happened to the value of property in this community. 2021 audited 500, our current $6 billion property value in a matter of years. Final steps for the board to be aware of. We will hopefully approve both levies tonight. Got a big date on November 8. In between that, as a reminder to the community, we've got Facebook Live this week, Wednesday. We have Facebook again, I believe, next week, Tuesday, and that will be in Spanish, so Zoom in Spanish. That's been updated on our website, and then we'll do another information session prior to the board meeting. That'll be November 7. After the results of the referendum, our our board clerk and the business office have to report the final levy to CPI. The levy will be the same, and both of them pass tonight, where the funds are actually being directed and what are built into our expected expenditures would change depending on the outcome of the referendum. And then essentially Pete and our board clerk have to send that allocation to our municipality by November 10. So we are a few weeks out from having all of this buttoned up and submitted to the API. The clock is ticking. As a reminder, today we're 15 days away from.
Not that you can't.
Other other questions or comments before I turn it over back to you? I think that clarity will be one of the back-up to board business.
I appreciate all the work that has gone into this. It's been such a educational process over the months to get us to this point where we have these two budgets, and that we understand what's in them. And we appreciate the work that has been put into keeping the rate as low as possible for our community while still taking care of ourselves.
Can I just summarize to make sure I'm understanding? So we have a proposed levy of 1140. That's for both referendum passes and referendum doesn't pass.
Correct.
That's a 10% drop from the from the tax rate from last year and a lower tax rate than at least the last 10 years, probably even further back.
The last board meeting, Pete pulled that up, and we were a couple of decades from the last time we touched anything below 11.
So with the referendum, the difference is where those funds are, which which fund those, the tax levy goes for, and how much we're prepaying on the capital debt, right? It's not a question of whether we prepay or don't prepay because even with a passing referendum and an increase in our operating budget, we'll still be prepaying the capital debt. Is that right?
Can you ensure that number? I believe our prepayment number is north of $10 million next year if it passes.
Passing. And we're not changing the the schedule of our debt payment either. It's not extending the life of the loan.
The life of the loan, not extended, it gets so budgeted to make payments on all of it.
Thank you.
And, you know, and Joe, I've received a few questions from the community down that road, and there have been questions around, I think, the misconception that because we're operating our school district with more, with potentially more resources from a past referendum, that we'll need to extend the life of the loan. And it is, it's important for everyone to remember that the community voted yes to principal and interest payments to the building we said. And we have a, we have a legal obligation to make payments on that and build it into our budget. So we have decided over the last five years to do some very aggressive prepayment on this building for substantial interest service that's still built into our budget, for sure, a few of the coming years. And depending on what happens with enrollment and state aid and property values, the board will continue to have those opportunities into the future. We've also tried to prioritize making sure we didn't have taxes go through the roof at the same time property values did. So, Joe, you put it perfectly well, but I think it's it's important for everyone to know. Yes, we are on schedule to continue to make payments as the very same payments folks voted for in 2017. With all the interest everyone voted for, the board has made the decision over the last five years to save on interest and we're going to continue to have that part of our conversation on an annual basis. In the short term, we're we're $11 million into prepayment. Pete probably will give you an exact number. Transfer end of 39 minus our minimum debt.
So this tax levy summary slide that you showed us, along with Joe saying, if someone looks at this, I'm just thinking of like, you know, I'm out in the public and I see this as part of the materials online. If someone looks at this, I'm just thinking of like, you know, I'm out in the public and I see this as part of the materials online. Basically, this is just showing the mill rate's the same, where it says non-passing and passing. In other words, my taxes, the mill rate that I'm paying is the same. But what I'm noticing, just big picture, is the general fund levy number is significantly different with the passing referendum. And then this referendum debt service plan is significantly different with the non-passing. Because of everything you just said, that there's going to be more money left if there's a non-passing money left in that service fund that goes forward. Prepayment, when you're saying saving of interest aggressively, but even if I look at the passing referendum numbers, that's enough to still pay off the debt. It's not like we're kicking it down the road.
It is, it's more than enough. Is it twelve point four? Yes, yes. So, so next year with the passing referendum. And, and we'll have, we get us, we get to make that decision a little bit late this winter in terms of what the final decisions amount could be. We have built into this budget an additional twelve point four million dollars of debt payment with a passed referendum. Substantial interest payment. But, you know, and, and, you know, we, we will have, well, these will be kind of the winter discussions as we're starting to look ahead to next year's budget. But we'll have some decisions for the board to make around, is this a time we maybe start to make some deposits into fund balance to make sure we can offset some costs for the upcoming operating capital referendum for an elementary school? Are there opportunities for us to chase after Fund Thirty Eight, which is our old capital? And then bring in our financial advisors to keep up with some interest rates we're paying on that. Other opportunities for us instead of defusing that to build up a Fund Thirty Nine fund balance, which you can do. So we would have a little bit of a rainy day bond that is now set aside for only capital payments. There's lots of opportunity, or we might elect to set the whole thing in, in a defense which would add with a kind of double principal payment in the future. Other questions?
So before I turn into our, our board and transition to the superintendent's report briefly and then ask to come back so the board can, can go into board action to take a vote on the proposal. I want to take a, a well-deserved time to just really acknowledge and thank our full business team. We have Chad and Pete that are right in front of you, also I have Michael McCout, who works heavily behind these things as well. We reward him on that, Jack, up here. But he's very, very hardworking young man in our organization. But when we think about walking into a situation with a five million dollar deficit coming in, state funding issue, record high inflation and saying, how can we still address this in a manner that is both responsible and is responsible to our, our tax base? What has just occurred and was proposed by, is being proposed to the Board of Education is nothing short of phenomenal. So I just want to say thank you to the team for that deep amount of work and commitment. But also you clearly looked at the mission and values of the Board of Education to our policy and drove decisions and proposals through that vision and kept it to catch students, student outcomes in center, knowing that these disciple financial decisions directly impact student outcomes in a way that our board expects. So they, huge shout out to them.
And we're grateful, and so thank you. If that's kind of the mission, impossible.
And we're hoping only it's easier from here. So we're hoping that you're, extra pleasure.
So I'll briefly close the superintendent's report and quickly ask the board action to the.
Sounds good. Okay, do I have a motion to approve the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two, twenty-three passing referendum budget as presented? I have a motion from Joe with their second. Second, a second from Jen, all in favor to approve the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three passing referendum budget as presented? Signify with aye. He's too young to vote. Any opposed? The motion to approve the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three passing referendum budget as presented has been passed. Do I have a motion to approve the certification of the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three tax levy at sixty-nine million, one hundred and fifty thousand, six hundred and sixty-nine dollars for a passing referendum? I have a motion from Joe, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Jen, all in favor, signify with aye. Any opposed? The motion to approve the certification of the tax levy for a passing referendum has been approved. Do I have a motion to approve the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three non-passing referendum budget as presented? So moved, I have a motion from Jen, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Joe, all in favor, signify with aye. Any opposed? The motion to approve the non-passing referendum budget as presented has been, has passed. And last, is there a motion to approve the certification of the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three tax levy at sixty-nine million, one hundred and fifty thousand, six hundred and sixty-nine dollars for a non-passing referendum?
So moved.
I have a motion from Joe, is there a second?
Second.
And a second from Jen, all in favor of approving the certification of the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three tax levy for a non-passing referendum, signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion has been approved. Thank you very much.
So as we move, that pushing for this. If we move back to superintendent's report, I just want to take, as I just acknowledged with the, with the business team, I want to take an opportunity to thank our Board of Education and really just, just lean into this for a second. Our Board of Education right now has just made a historical vote that moves our tax mill rate down to eleven dollars and forty cents, which is the lowest that it's been in decades. Given the parameters of our state funding, but also acknowledging our board's mindset of fiscal responsibility and understanding the needs of our, our community, I don't want that to be taken very slightly with our board, where our board is just excuse. What I know will be not just a rural area hype headline, but also probably a statewide headline when that number becomes a public because of the historical context on it, it's huge. When you think about that in the full context of a November eighth question on, on the ballot, knowing that that question, that, that number stays exactly the same, would they yes or no on that question? Also shows a significant amount of faith in, in our community, but also the commitment of our Board of Education not to play games with money. And not to play games with, with, with our budget. So when you think about the opportunity to go to a, a ballot and know that I am making a, a decision that's not going to impact my, my taxes and the finances, how that is a almost impossible task, but our Board of Education has just accomplished that. So I just want to put that publicly on record and thank you, but also sometimes you have to care outside in what our board just, just, just accomplished while still paying twelve point four million dollars in, in, in prepayment of debt. So when we say it all out, I just want to put it all together that you deserve statewide recognition for what you've just accomplished.
Well, we appreciate the leadership of you and your team to get us to this point, to be able to make those kind of decisions and thank you.
Thank you. All right. And I got.
Hey.
How are you?
Absolutely wonderful.
You said it was hope. So as you know, we've been working towards a journey coherent and one of the moves that we rightfully did with the board's approval and understanding was narrow our, our focus of our organization to a clear operations side of our house and a clear academic side of our house. As you just heard, the budgetary components of our, of our work, you'll certainly hear the academic services component because this is where the student outcomes come, come into play. We are financing student outcomes and so there's a high expectation for student results of that. To accomplish that, the, our district is moving forward with a strategic framework led by the academic services team. But you're going to be privy to the progress of, of, of the work and the timeline for that work, work moving forward because time is flying and it will be, be here before you know it, the science of rule of the strategic framework. So with that, I'm turning it over to Dr. Hoggas talking for a short summary of the progress of the framework.
Good evening. So just want to update you all. A few months ago, you all were given the opportunity to meet education elements they presented in this hearing room. And so that's the group that has helped them to facilitate the enormous task of creating and developing our strategic plan. And so the update tonight, there's a timeline in front of you. And so the process started in July with our kickoff meeting. And the kickoff meeting introduced the steering team, the steering team. And so there are several teams, there's the project team, there's the steering team, and then there's a planning team. And so the steering team met back in July and at that kickoff meeting, we explored aspects of engaging the community, identifying voices that are always heard. And then if we're not intentional, how we can miss out on opportunities to engage with our students, to engage with families and community members that we don't often, that don't often come to the table. So that was enlightening and inspiring work and so that then led to our first meeting on August the eleventh. And so at that meeting, the steering team helped to determine the window for engaging our community members. Ed Elements, so we have Ed Elements, which is the consulting group that is working with us. And so they are leading and working with us on some of our groups. So they met with some of our focus groups, but we decided that we wanted to expand our window as well as we wanted to make sure we heard from all of our voices. And so as a steering team, we wanted to ensure that we captured all the voices. And so in addition to focus groups, we used our culture and climate survey data, we shadowed students. We were intentional with our feedback spaces and we were, we targeted outreach to bilingual families, our staff of colors, students that identify as LGBTQIA and other student groups. I will say to you all, when we think about this engagement, it was absolutely amazing. So our engagement window was September the nineteenth through October the fourth, through October the fourteenth. And we heard from over three hundred and seventy-five constituents at all engagement events. We shadowed more than fifteen students, we hosted more than thirty-five focus groups, we conducted over thirty empathy interviews and we surveyed more than thirty-three hundred constituents. So what I will say to you all about this engagement window, we were determined that we wanted to experience what students experience. So the strategic plan is about charting our path. And, and more importantly, it's about ensuring that our students have the best possible experience. And one way to ensure that is to experience what our students experience. And so the shadow of a student allowed members of our steering team to live the life of a Merona student from pre-K all the way up to eighteen to twenty-one. And so Karen Stox Blumber, sprint today at Glacier Edge as a fifth grader. And, and when you shadowed a student, you had to do everything a student did. So you had to engage in lunch if they participated in PE. Jason Rubio, the director of technology, he shadowed a senior. And the walk away, the takeaways that the participants, the members have really helped to influence the feedback that's going to go into our strategic plan. As we listen to our students, our middle school students, they were very connected with the strategic plan because we helped them to know that a strategic plan is five years. And so for our middle schoolers at seventh and eighth grade, this plan is going to span their school journey. And so when we shared with them that their input matters, they immediately, I will tell you with the help of donuts and pizza, we were able to elicit lots of information from our students. But some of the things that we heard from our students included, they want to see different class offerings. They wanted things like, you know, lunch matters. And so we explained to them, you know, there are certain guidelines that we have to follow. But they then, you know, opened up to say, okay, yeah, you all have to follow certain guidelines, but you can offer hot sauce. You can offer certain things within the guidelines. There were other things like, you know, talking to our students about school safety and unearthing where some of, where overall, you know, and I don't want to, you know, I don't want to make any assumptions, but you know, just in listening to them talk about school safety, we were also able to unearth that there are some places where we as adults feel like our students are safe, but then our fifth graders are, are like, yes, the doors are shut and we feel safe with our doors locked. But what happens if I go out and I can't get back in? So we were also able to make some in-flight adjustments just listening to our students, like making sure our fifth graders know that, yes, when you go out to the bathroom, we can leave the door cracked so that you can come back in, reassuring them that, yes, our schools are safe and they're safe when they go out. So our, our, our community engagement window was probably, you know, I want to say one of the highlights of this whole process. Listening to our, listening to our constituents, hearing from our parents, hearing from our staff, what's important to them and what they value. I want to also, you know, say that we employed members at all levels. So Jen Murphy, she's on our steering team, John Corco, he is on our planning team. And Jen, you have an opportunity to watch all of this play out, if you want to, can you speak to that?
The first thing I want to say is thank you, I mean, to you and, I mean, I know some of the folks, I know we're all in this together. But I thoroughly recognize the amount of lift that some of you all in this room took on in getting these numbers to show up like this. So just my pro con gratitude and having been in this district for almost twenty-four years, I've never been a part of this process at all. But still, I feel like I can say this is amazing. I mean, the intentionality behind all of this and the voices and the representation, it's just the amount of bandwidth and dedication this work is just mind-blowing to me. So I am thankful to be a part of it, but extreme gratitude to just everybody who's put the time into all of this. I'm excited to dissect it all.
Yes, yes. So that takes us to the next phase. And so what will happen between now and December the seventh, Ed Elements is going to take all of the data and they are going to begin to sort and code and they will then put it in different buckets and different themes will emerge. And so when we come together on December the seventh, we will begin to analyze and think about where our priority areas are. We also want to look that the board has established our mission statement and that is each student will acquire the knowledge and skills necessary to achieve their personal goals, thrive in a diverse global society and lead a healthy and self-fulfilling life. And so the work that we do on December the seventh, eighth and beyond will be to identify and lift the beliefs and values that will bring this mission to fruition. Dr. Clarity?
Thank you. So I want to lean into that statement, thank you for looking that up, it's so important. So we know in many strategic frameworks, a, sometimes a new mission statement is created as part of a strategic framework. That is not the intent of, of our group, our Board of Education worked very hard and clearly stated, this is our, our VSC mission statement, so it would be genius for us to go back in even put into the space that we were looking to change what our board has set because our board is representative of our community. We lifted our, the mission statement and then know the work of the team is, what are the, what is our strategic framework in service of this mission statement? Because the mission statement was written, it's powerful and we all believe it. We must because every leadership move we've made since its acceptance has been based off of this mission statement. So it's, I know sometimes value, mission and basically get, that, that kind of get mixed up, what we want to clear. This is the mission, this is the mission statement, this will be the mission statement of the other rural area school district and we will work in service of that mission statement through our strategic framework. So there'll be no intention of changing that.
So additionally, from this work, we'll also begin to identify the skills that our community believes are important for all of our students and learners. So we will then begin crafting out the journey of a lifelong learner. And so what will happen there is we'll identify skills, we'll identify characteristics, we'll begin co-designing and then we'll present. And so what will happen there is we'll identify skills, we'll identify characteristics, um, we'll begin co-designing and then we'll present, um, this work to our constituents for their feedback to then formalize the journey of a lifelong learner. So there's two things that are going on, our strategic plan, um, developing that. And then the, um, emerging of the skills and the characteristics that will go into developing the journey of a lifelong learner. So then I'm going to take you back to the timeline. So that work that I just referenced will be December, uh, seventh and eighth. And then we will engage in design sessions. And so what we'll do is we will take all the information, all the feedback and we will craft, uh, well, actually things will emerge. But then from those themes, we will then really drill down and identify strategies. What's the work? What will you really see play out? And so from there, we will present this work to our constituents for their feedback. Um, because we want them, we want everyone to realize that they are co-designing this with us. This is not just a team, well, it is a team, but our community is involved in this team. We really want to make sure that we continue to put it in front of our students. We continue to put it in front of our teachers. We continue to put it in front of all of our educators. So what will then happen, um, after all of that work, we will then design a beautiful brochure. And you know, a brochure can be beautiful or a pamphlet can be beautiful, but it's about the content. So we will package and market all of that and be prepared to share that rolling out in July, August of twenty twenty-three. We'll launch our twenty-three to twenty-eight strategic plan, journey of a lifelong. What questions might you all have for me?
No questions. It's just, it's again, I, I feel, Jen, this is just a, a very, I love the intentionality. This is huge. This is a huge undertaking and I love that there's so many opportunities for boys to really, um, capture community values for the benefit of our students.
Yes, I definitely, I mean, I have to say, you know, Ed Elements said, whoa, you all are really, but it is, it has definitely been worth a worthwhile experience, especially for our students to see this, to see this work and to hear and know that their voices are valued. So, I mean, me, and I will say, you know, we were intentional to make sure, you know, those students that aren't often engaged, let's talk to them. You know, we often get the students that are vocal and we hear their voice. But let's talk to the students that aren't connected with school. What's their experience and how can we lift up their voice and, and take that information and allow it to drive the decisions and the things that we're doing for the next five years? So I will say we, we were very intentional with capturing, um, talking to parents and talking to our community members to make sure that we hear their voices.
Thank you. We're gonna, it's exciting to see the progression here, hear everything that's been done and yet to be done. So thank you. This is again, huge undertaking, so.
You all will hear another update from us, um, once our themes emerge. So, uh, I'm, I'm, end of January, no, end of December, January, we'll update you all again. Um, we will also update our community and share with them and want them to know and see the work that they contributed to so that they will be a part of this process throughout the whole process and not just, oh, here's the plan. Here, you know, no, we want them to be involved and see this work unfold.
All right, you're exciting. Thank you.
So a couple of quick, uh, things regarding the strategic framework. First, I'd like to thank you for the wonderful plans and thanks for continuing to involve all of us in this process. Um, enjoy, uh, the, the, the multiple meetings, but they're, they're, they're definitely necessary. And so, thank, thank you so much. Um, I do want to put into this space. I just want to put into the space that, um, if there's ever any wondering about my stance as leader of the district about, for the investment or intentionality in engaging students and understanding their needs, as well as being publicly stated, that the moment we stop gaining perspective of our students is the moment we fail as educators. And so that will always be my stance as leader, leader of this, that we will engage our students in deep, in getting their perspectives and understanding of how to, uh, best allow them to, to thrive in concert with the mission statement that, uh, our, our force. But, but if you can't do that, you know, asking the students for their perspective and thoughts. So I just wanted to put that publicly in this space, as I said.
I just echo something with that. I mean, as a board member, even though we did all this work on this results policy, I would like students to tell me what they think a healthy, self-fulfilling life is, or what they think it means to thrive in a global society. That's not my position to tell them what that looks like. That's the vision we hope and to get their feedback on what they anticipate that vision, what that would look like to cover permission. So I agree as a board member too, that we're not dictating the how, that's the, the hope we have.
And thank you to the students who shared their words. I think the shadowing thing sounds so intriguing. I also want to acknowledge, thank you to the students who are shadowed. Cause I'm sure like, you know, having an adult shadow you all day has got to be a unique experience, whether you're a high schooler or a 4K'er. So that's wonderful. And I think, um, I haven't heard that we've done that in the past, so that's intriguing and I think wonderful. So thanks to the students.
Thank you so much. And again, thank you, Dr. Hawkins, for a great presentation. All right, uh, that's it. I'd like to, just like we close the superintendent's report and put it back to item four and then report action. Uh, we've already considered item A.
Yeah, that brings to item B. So this is just a kind of a brief overview. We have our appointment process that's coming up, the window open today. It'll be open from today until November second, um, at five P M. So applicants are, um, any applicant should submit a short resume and a letter of intent outlining how the person would, how the applicant would support the district's mission, that every student will acquire the knowledge and skills necessary to achieve their personal goals, drive into a diverse global society and lead a healthy and self-fulfilling life. Um, so hopefully we will have some, um, news on applicants that you all posted once the window closes. Uh, we will be conducting one round of in-person interviews and that will be on November fourteenth. Um, and that will be just a standalone meeting at the end of which we will go to appoint somebody to receive and so be April twenty twenty-three election. So are there any questions that anyone has? So, and this is, this is available on our website and information is available on our website and will be going out through. Hopefully, um, again, we'll keep you posted. So that's if for board action. And again, if there's any questions or if you're getting any questions of board members that, um, you don't know the answers to, direct it to either, uh, me or Jen. Um, and we'd be happy to address them. Okay. Um, any public comment tonight? And then let's move on to superintendent consent agenda. Are there any questions about the consent agenda as presented?
Yes. Sorry, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Sorry, um, I just wanted to abstain from voting on the consent agenda. Um, just because I'm related to someone whose name happened to be there.
A familiar name, um, as a, a new, uh, hire. So we will let Nicole abstain from the vote. And then also, um, I also see that we have, um, Renee Wattersley, who is retiring after twenty-five years of service. So that is certainly something that we want to acknowledge. Renee has been a huge asset to our, our district over the years. So we wish her all the best. Um, okay. So the consent agenda without any questions has been approved, um, as presented. Moving on to board consent agenda, are there any questions? Yes. Thank you. Uh, any questions on the board's consent agenda? Hearing none and has been approved as presented. And then we have future agenda items. Uh, again, we have a regular board meeting on November seventh. Um, again, reminder that there is a community listening session, um, right before that, and we will be at Savannah. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Yes.
A listening session.
Yes. Yes, uh, November eighth is not on our future agenda items, but it is a date that is seared into our minds. So keep in mind, November eighth, uh, November fourteenth, we have on the calendar as our, uh, board interview workshop. It'll be at, uh, six P M. In this room, our next regular board meeting will be on the twenty-first. And then we have December fifth and December twelfth in the calendar. Okay. With that, um, I'm going to adjourn to close session under Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight five sub one sub F. To consider financial, medical, social or personal histories or disciplinary data of specific persons, preliminary consideration of specific personal problems or the investigation or charges against specific persons, except where paragraph D applies, which, if discussed in public, would likely to have a substantial adverse effect on reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data or involved in such problems or investigations regarding people's expulsion hearings. Why have a motion to adjourn? So, a motion from Jen, is there a second? Second, second from Christina, we'll do a roll call vote, starting with Joe.
I.
Christina.
I.
Jen.
I.
And Nicole.
I.
I, um, I vote I as well. We are officially adjourned to close session. Thank you, everybody.
Nicole, we'll send you a new Zoom link.
Sounds great.
Thank you.